I'll call the meeting to order. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the council meeting on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order at one o'clock. I'll now read the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the township of Assidel Norwood is located on the Treaty Twenty Mississauga Territory and the traditional territory of the Mississauga and Chipewa Nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which include Kirk Lake, Iowa, Altraville, Scugog Island, Rama, Bozalay, and Georgina Islands First Nations. The township of Assidel Norwood respectfully acknowledges that the Williams Treaty First Nations are the stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity, and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. And I'll now invite everyone to pause for a moment of silent reflection to prepare for the council meeting ahead as a gesture of respect and contemplation. I'll now ask council members to declare any pecuniary interests in any matters and any end to state the interest now or at the time the matter arises. Seeing no hands, I'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve today's agenda as circulated, moved by councillor Ward, seconded by deputy mayor Berg. All in favor? All in favor? That motion's carried. I am looking for a motion to adopt the council minutes of September twelfth as presented before amended. Moved by councillor Walsh. Seconded by councillor Hodges.
As presented.
As presented. Any discussions? All in favor? That motion's carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve the correspondence items C one and C two. The cemetery board minutes of June twentieth and library board minutes of July fifth as circulated or amended. Moved by deputy mayor Berg. Seconded by councillor Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion's carried.
I can just ask if there's any business arising with the minutes.
Sure. Sorry, councillors, is there any business arising from the minutes of September twelve? I never did ask that question. No? Alright. Moving along, we have a delegation from Watson Associates with us today. Peter, please go ahead with your presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you very much and good afternoon, everyone. It's my pleasure to be joining you this afternoon to provide an overview of the development charges background study that Watson and Associates have been preparing for the township. We have put together a slideshow presentation that will walk through. I believe you've been provided with with a copy of it as a handout, so we'll start on slide one with the agenda for the afternoon. So in the presentation, we will go through a general introduction to development charges as a funding mechanism. We will also go through a high level summary of how the development charges regime has changed or evolved in recent years through various legislative changes, as well as an overview of the methodology that has to be followed when completing a development charges background study. We will also provide a summary of the draft findings as we understand them today. We will then have a discussion of the township's current development charge policies, as well as some proposed adjustments to those policies moving forward. And then finally, we'll have a summary of the next steps in this process. So turning to skip over slide two, that's a title slide for the introduction section on slide three, by way of a high level introduction. So development charges are a discretionary tool that's available to municipalities. And their purpose is to help municipalities recover the capital costs associated with residential and non-residential growth within a municipality. Development charges are based on the growth pace for growth principle, which helps us ensure that the existing taxpayers and rate payers and some agents are not burdened with paying for the increase in need for service or the service expansion required due to this future growth that's anticipated to occur. The capital costs that are recovered through the development charging mechanism are related to the infrastructure or service expansion that's beyond what would be required for developers to in place directly within the subdivision itself. So any internal roads, internal pipes, sidewalks, streetlights, those are typically a direct requirement for a developer to in place. So those are covered under subdivision agreements. Development charges help ensure that the broader infrastructure expansion that beyond the immediate needs or that's internal to a subdivision can be recovered as well. Municipalities are empowered to impose these charges under the authority of the Development Charges Act as amended. We'll go through some of the amendments over the recent years shortly. The township currently imposes development charges under bylaw twenty eighteen dash fifty seven. That bylaw will be expiring on January first of twenty twenty four. And in order for the township to be able to continue collecting development charges beyond that point, a development charges study must be completed to inform a new development charges bylaw. And so that's really been the purpose of undertaking this work at this time, to put the township in a position to consider the approval of new development charges bylaw in time to replace the one that will be expiring on January first. So moving ahead then to slides five, it would be, which is a whole flowchart illustrating the legislative changes that have occurred since twenty nineteen. So a lot of these have happened, or all of these have happened since the township last undertook its full development charges background study in twenty eighteen. We won't go through these in a great amount of detail, but just to highlight four key areas that have where these changes have had an impact. So firstly, there have been changes to the services that are eligible for inclusion in a development charge by municipalities. Some of these changes have provided further discounts or in some cases full exemptions from the payment of development charges for certain types of development. Thirdly, there have been some changes made to the timing of payment of development charges. So when certain developments pay those development charges as well as providing some some limits on what the rates are that certain developments pay when they're ultimately developing. And then the the fifth area are just a broader broader set of kind of more technical changes that impact development charge bylaws and how we undertake the calculations as well. So all of those changes that have occurred since twenty eighteen and in as latest last year have been incorporated into this process. So we are ensuring that the township with the new bylaws will be in full compliance with the legislation as as we have it in front of us today. So moving ahead then to slide six, we have a flowchart that illustrates the or summarizes the methodology that must be followed under the Development Charges Act, as the act is quite prescriptive in terms of the steps that must be followed. So I'll just walk through this at a at a high level. So the whole process commences by looking at the anticipated development for a municipality. And we're looking at the both the amounts as well as the type and the location of that growth that's expected to occur. Having established that growth forecast, we are then looking at the anticipated increase in need for service that would result from that growth. And we're doing that on a service by service basis. We must then ensure that that increase in need for service that we have an expression of council that those needs will be met. And that will be done through council approval of the capital needs that are identified in the background study, which we'll come back to later, which we'll be releasing within the next few weeks. And that future anticipated increase in the need for service also has to be measured in light of the historical level of service that's been provided by the municipality over the past fifteen years. And that requirement is really there to ensure that what we are including in a development charge or what we're charging future development for will not result in an increase in the level of service that's being provided. So really, development charges are intended to be a mechanism that allows the municipality to maintain a consistent level of service as the population and the employment base grow, not as a mechanism to improve the level of service. So that's that's a very important limitation to consider. So once we have established that overall anticipated increase in need for service, we are then given consideration to specific capital projects that would need to be undertaken to ensure that that anticipated increase in need for service would be met. And we have to make a determination as to what share of those project costs would be funded from development charges. And there are a few important deductions that we have to observe by through that process. Most notably, where a project would benefit the existing population. We have to make sure that we're deducting that portion of the project cost and only including the incremental or additional service capacity provided by a project in a development charge. So as a as a pilot example, let's say a municipality was looking to replace an existing arena with a larger one to accommodate future growth. So that share of the new arena that would be replacing an existing one, we would deduct because that's a benefit to the existing population base that you currently have, and only the oversizing of that facility would potentially be included in the calculation of the charge. So those are some some of the key deductions that we have to observe, as well as if there are any anticipated grants that may help offset some of those growth-related needs, we would need to deduct those as well, so that we're not double counting those within the development charge calculation as well. So in addition to those capital costs, we then also have the ability to include financing costs. So to the extent a municipality may need to borrow money to finance some of that infrastructure, any interest on that borrowing can be included in the calculation chart of the charge as well. And so ultimately, that leaves us with these net development charge recoverable costs, which we're showing towards the bottom of of the illustration. And then taking those net development charge recoverable costs, we divided those by the anticipated amount of developments to come up with a charge per residential unit, as well as a charge per square quarter, square meter gross floor area for non-residential developments. So that gives us the quantum of the charge itself. And then in addition to the to that numbers part of it, there are a number of implementation policy considerations that we have to give thought to as well, such as the spatial applicability of the charge. So will these charges apply across the entire municipality on a uniform basis? Or is there needs to impose some of these charges are more of a area-specific basis? We have to give thought to the timing of payments when those that will be required, redevelopment credits, exemptions, and so on. And we'll come back to those policy issues a little bit later on in the presentation. So that again, at a high level summarizes the process that we have to go through when establishing development charges. So then we can move forward a couple of slides. So this would be slide number eight with the title of DC growth forecast at the top. So the growth forecast underlying the development charges background study has been prepared for a ten-year forecast horizon. And the numbers are based on the county of Peterborough growth analysis reports dating back to March of last year, which informed the county's official plan update. And so based on that information over the next ten years or to twenty thirty-three, the township is expected to grow by approximately one thousand and forty-seven people. That's what you see in the second column of the table at the very bottom. And that population growth would be housed in approximately four hundred and forty-eight additional dwelling units over that period. So that result would result in about a two percent annualized growth rate. We are also planning for an employment increase to twenty thirty-three of an additional three hundred and fifty-five jobs within the township. And that job growth would be accompanied by an additional four hundred and nineteen thousand square feet of additional non-residential building space over the forecast period.
Um, Peter, just can I just quickly interrupt here? So council has seen numbers that aren't going to be in alignment with what you're seeing there for population. And because council is aware that we see we have developments on in the queue that will obviously result in a much higher population increase of what's presented here, and that's simply because all of the developments that are proposed in Assidel Norwood were not included in the new Peterborough County official plan based on the status of those developments at their cutoff date. So Peterborough County established a cutoff date because they needed to just have a date that everyone worked towards. And based on where the developments were, they needed to be in the draft plan approval stage. And we have developments that are in the queue coming through, but didn't weren't at the appropriate stage of development to be considered in the Peterborough County official plan. The impact of that is 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 minimal from the perspective that we're still going to be able to see those developments come online. It's not like we're not going to see the approval at the county level. It is that the growth allocation was not given to this township in the official plan process. But unfortunately, the DC process is hinged towards it. You'll see that water and wastewater isn't included in the DC. It never has been in this municipality. It's always been in our recent charges bylaw. But when you see the connection fee study and justification, that's when you'll see the real numbers in water, wastewater in the village that relate to the actual growth that's in the queue. Just to, there is a a difference there. Doesn't mean we can't collect the DC on all of those additional units. Sorry, I I seen some like, I seen the wheels turning around the table. Got the look. Thank you, Peter. Sorry about that.
Yes, no, absolutely. That's really important context, obviously, within the growth that you have heard or aware of that's in the development pipeline. One thing to to note related to that is that ultimately, the development charge is calculated on a per capita basis on the residential side. So we are ensuring that the capital needs that we have identified are not necessarily looking at the full servicing needs of the population growth that would be captured within those developments that you have in process, but we're relating it to this ten-year forecast that's tied to the county's work. So in effect, on a per capita basis, we are calculating an appropriate amount. And as you get more development coming in beyond what is included in this forecast, you will continue to collect development charges on all of that development as well, which will increase your development charge revenues and provide for additional growth-related needs to be paid for beyond what we considered as part of the study. So mathematically speaking, the the charge works out either way, but it is important to recognize that the capital needs we have included in this background study will be related to this ten-year growth increments that's tied to the county's work. So then moving ahead to slide nine. So in light of that that growth that we just discussed, we then look at the services that are eligible for inclusion in a development charge and the increase in need for service that will be generated by that growth within each respective service area. So listed on slide nine here is the the whole range of services that are eligible for inclusion under the Development Charges Act. And we have highlighted the ones that are considered that were considered as part of this process. So we have considered services related to a highway or your roads and related infrastructure. We have considered waste diversion, fire protection services, library, as well as parks and recreation. Notably, the water and wastewater services are not highlighted, as was just mentioned, that is because the township's historical practice has been to recover the cost, the growth-related costs that infrastructure under a capital charge, which is imposed under the authority of the municipal act. So it's a similar mechanism, but comes with fewer restrictions than under the Development Charges Act. So the practice moving forward, the recommendation would be for the township to continue to recover the growth-related costs related to water and wastewater under that mechanism. And we will be coming forward with a connection charge study in in the next little while. We have in fact completed the technical background work on that or just compiling the formal reports so that we can bring that piece in front of council as well. So those were the the specific services that were considered as part of this process and that you will see shortly have been included in the calculation of of the charge. So moving forward then to slide ten with the title capital needs and DC recoverable share. So across all of the the five service areas that were considered as part of this process, capital needs totaling approximately nine point six million dollars have been identified. A number of deductions have been made against those needs as detailed with the donut chart on the left-hand side of the slide. Specifically, the benefit to existing of about nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars or about ten percent of that total capital. There's a post-period benefit that we have recognized of about three point three million dollars, and that's related to some of the expansion projects that we identified within the roads and related roads and public works portion of the charge. There are some facility oversizing needs that were identified and some additional purchases of equipment that would be sufficient to allow you to service the entirety of the growth that's in the development pipeline. So going beyond that ten-year forecast horizon that we've identified in the development charge background study. So that's what we're calling this post-period benefit in the sense that it's beyond the ten-year period considered in the DC study. So to make sure that that per capita calculation is appropriate in light of all of the growth that those assets will be servicing, we do make that post-period benefit deduction. And then finally, we do have to observe any amounts that the township has available within the development charge reserve funds that have been collected from prior developments that are available at this time. So those would be uncommitted development charge reserve fund balances that can be used to offset those future capital needs. So taking those deductions into account, the net development charge recoverable costs captured within the calculation of the charge total approximately five point one million dollars. And the table on the right-hand side of slide ten, we have shown how what share of those costs are associated with each respective service area. And so you will see that about forty-three percent of the total recoverable costs are within the roads and related section. This is very common to see really development charges are are mostly helping recover those hard infrastructure costs. So it's very common to see that roads and related be the greatest proportion of the capital needs identified, followed by fire protection, where we have about one point five million dollars of of net DC recoverable cost, which represents about thirty percent of the total. And then that's followed by parks and recreation at about twenty-three percent of the recoverable capital costs and then library and waste diversion at two percent and one percent respectively.
Councillor Walsh?
Here's a quick, sweetie, man. A quick question. Please say, my understanding are these costs will rise as we grow.
But it's not capital. It's operation. So it's an operational contract. We don't provide any capital needs.
Perfect. So then moving ahead to slide eleven titled Calculated Charges. So having talked about the growth forecast and the capital costs and of of the anticipated increase in need for service that would result from that growth, the schedule on slide eleven shows the calculated development charge rates for different types of residential units. So the total development charge is applicable to a new single or semi-detached home would be eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. So that's based on the calculation that we have undertaken. And then the charges for other types of residential units are based on the average occupancy in in terms of persons per unit. So for example, because apartment units tend to have fewer occupants on average than a singly patched home, their development charge is correspondingly lower. And then on the far right-hand side of the table on slide eleven, the schedule also shows the development charge rates per square foot of gross floor area for non-residential development for each respective service area. So perhaps more informative, we will forward to slide twelve. We have provided a comparison of the charges that are currently in effect to those that have been calculated through this process. So just to explain, the table on slide twelve provides a breakdown of the development charges payable, excuse me, on a single detached dwelling unit. And in the second column of the table, we are showing what the current charges are that are in effect by service area. So in terms of the municipal wide services, so these would apply in any part of the township, the development charge payable on the single detached home currently would be seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And then within the village of Norwood, there are some area-specific charges that currently apply specifically related to stormwater management and street lighting and sidewalks. So the total development charge payable within the village of Norwood will be somewhat higher or nine thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars per singly patched home. So then in the third column of the table, we are showing the calculated charge and again, how that breaks down by each respective service area. So the calculated charges within the village of Norwood would be eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars for singly detached unit. And those charges would also apply more broadly across the township. So we haven't identified any area-specific needs as part of this process. All of the five service areas that have been considered and included within the calculation of the charge would be proposed to be applied on a township-wide basis moving forward. So within the village of Norwood, the the increase resulting from the calculated charge would be about a twenty-eight percent increase or about two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars per residential unit. And in other areas of the township, the resultant increase would be about just under forty-five hundred dollars per unit or an increase of about sixty-two percent from the charges that are currently in effect. Something to note here, this came about through the latest set of legislative changes or Bill twenty-three towards the end of last year, is that the province has now required municipalities to phase in any new development charge bylaw over a period of five years. So irrespective of the fact that we calculated a total development charge of eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars per unit in the first year of the new bylaw, you can impose a maximum of eighty percent of that full calculated charge. And so in the final column of the table on slide twelve, we are showing what those charges would be with that phase-in provision in the first year of the bylaw. So that's again a rate that's at eighty percent of the full calculated rate. In each year after that, the that phase in goes up by five percentage points, so that by the fifth year of the bylaw being in effect, and municipalities finally able to recover the full extent of the calculated charge.
Uh, sorry. Councillor Hodges.
Through you, Mayor, to either Peter or Candace. In terms of the development charges, are these relating to developments that have a subdivision agreement? Is that like, what's the minimum size of the development that the development charges take effect? So it's not for a single-family home. It is for a single-family home.
Building permit driven.
It's building permits. So it doesn't have to be as part of a formal
Right.
new subdivision.
Right.
It could be if you have a lot and you're building anywhere in the township, the it's on top of the building permits, it's eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars per single-family dwelling unit.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So that's the comparison for a single detached dwelling. Moving forward then to slide thirteen, we have a similar comparison, but these are the charges that would apply to non-residential development. So your commercial, industrial, institutional developments and charges for those types of developments are imposed on a on the basis of square or on per square foot of gross floor area. And so again, we're showing in the second column of the table the charges that are currently in effect. So the total charges payable at the very bottom of the table within the village of Norwood would be seventy-four cents per square foot. In other areas of the township, it would be forty-six cents per square foot. And with the calculations that have been completed, the full calculated charge on a township-wide basis would be five dollars and nine cents per square foot. So that is a notable increase. We have done some digging to try to understand why that change is so pronounced. We were not involved in the preparation of the township's last development charges study, but in reviewing that, it appears that that difference is as a result of how the costs were allocated between residential and non-residential development. So one of the things we do, going back to kind of the process of calculating development charges, that we come up with a list of these growth-related projects that would need to be completed to provide additional service capacity and their costs. And once we have those costs, we need to allocate them between residential and non-residential development. And then each portion we're dividing by the respective development. So the residential portion of the cost we're dividing by the amount of residential development and the non-residential portion of the cost we're dividing by the amount of non-residential gross floor area that we're expecting to develop over the forecast period. So the generally accepted practice for doing that is allocating those costs between residential and non-residential based on the relative share of population to employment growth. So on that basis, we've allocated those costs seventy-five percent to residential development and twenty-five percent to non-residential development. Looking at the two thousand eighteen background study, it used a very different approach for allocating those costs, and it was based on taxable assessment. So it had allocated ninety-six percent of these costs to the residential sector and only four percent to non-residential, which suppressed the charge on the non-residential side quite significantly. So it's not that so what I'm trying to highlight here is that when we're looking at the current charges versus the calculated charges on the non-residential side, it's not really an It's not really an apples to apples comparison, it's not that the charge has gone up because the amount of capital needs have gone up exponentially. There is a difference in the funded difference in the calculation of the charge. Um but again, having done several hundreds of of these studies across the province over the past several uh years. Uh the methodology that we have employed here is certainly defensible in how we propose to allocate those costs between residential and non residential. So again, it's based on uh relative share of population growth to employment growth rather than taxable assessment. Because those are really the, when we look at what drives the increase in need for service, it is tied to additional people. Direct using the road network, uh using recreational facilities, for example, and so on, it's not really tied to taxable assessment. So then um moving ahead to slide fourteen, um what we wanted to do, so that was titled Survey of Development Charges. Uh what we wanted to do is to put the calculated uh charges or specifically the charges that would be in effect within the first year of the bylaw into the context of. What a similar type of development would be paying in other area municipalities, so. Uh the chart on slide fourteen shows the total development charges that would be payable in these different jurisdictions for a singly detached home. Um the blue portion of the bars represents the respective municipalities uh development charge. There's an or- orange portion of the bar which represents upper tier charges where those are applicable. And then there's also a smaller green portion which uh represents the education uh board development charges again where those are applicable to provide. Uh the full context of the development charges payable on this type of development. Um there is a slight labeling error, I apologize for that, I just realized that on this chart on slide fourteen, so I'll just. Walk you through the four arrows that are shown from the right to left to explain what they show. So the right most arrow shows the development charges that would currently be payable on a singly detached home. And areas outside of the village of Norwood. And then as discussed earlier, within the village of Norwood, there are some additional area specific charges that currently apply. So the total development charges payable um are shown with the second arrow from the right that would apply within the village of Norwood currently. And then the two left most arrows show what the charge would be payable on a singly detached home. Really anywhere in the township uh moving forward, because as discussed, we haven't identified the need for any area specific charges at this point. So both within the village of Norwood and elsewhere across the township, the charge would be the same and slightly higher. Uh or somewhat higher than the charges that are currently in effect. However, with those changes that would still maintain your relative position um for the most part relative to the comparative municipalities that have been included in the survey. And as you can also see, your charges would continue to be generally aligned or certainly well within the range of charges that we see in other jurisdictions.
Counselor Walsh.
Uh thank you, through you, mayor, um I was just curious, when doing the comparisons to other municipalities. Was there any thought process why um H um like uh Havlock uh Valma and then was not included in this?
They don't have a D C bylaw.
They don't have a. Why?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yes, thank you for the question, sometimes we do include them and just show it as a zero to make it more explicit, but yes, other times, I guess in this case, we did just go with the ones that do impose a development charge.
That question prior, thank you.
So that's the residential comparison on slide fifteen, uh we then have a similar uh comparison, but this time looking at a. Uh what the development charges payable would be per square foot or a commercial uh type development. Um so the two arrows, this one is labeled correctly, so the two arrows, gray arrows on the right hand side of the chart show what the charges would be. Um currently um based on either within the broader township or within the village of Norwood, which those charges are slightly higher. And then the two left most arrows or the two teal arrows show what the charges would be in the first year of the new bylaw. Um under the calculated charges and with the eighty percent uh phase in provision. So again, there would be an increase and in this case, uh but you would still be well within the range of charges that we see in other area municipalities in in that regard. And then finally, one more comparison on slide sixteen. Um this time for a industrial type development. Now, in terms of what the charges would be payable from the from the township standpoint, those would be the same as for a commercial development. However, there are a number of municipalities that exempt industrial development from the payment of development charges fully. And so that's why we typically include this comparison separately for industrial. And in fact, the the county of Peterborough exempts industrial development from the payment of development charges, so just by virtue of that. Industrial development would be paying less uh within township than commercial development would. Although they would be paying the same township portion of the charge as commercial development would. So then um moving ahead to the final part of the presentation, uh section four, I will go to slide eighteen. Uh which we're going to go through some of the um policies um surrounding the implementation of the development charge by law. So so starting on again slide eighteen. Um it is recommended currently moving forward that the township imposes development charges under a separate by law for each service area. So currently, all of your development charges for all the services are captured within a single by law. Um which has been the practice across the province historically. But in response to some of the legislative changes that have occurred and specifically in response to that phase in requirement. Uh we are suggesting that municipalities separate their bylaws by service, and that's done so that if you need to reopen the development charge by law for one of those services. Let's say two, three years down the road, because um your understanding of the growth related um costs has changed significantly. You can reopen just that one by law, um pass a new by law and you will only need to observe the phase in period on that single service. It doesn't impact all your other services, so it just provides more flexibility uh with updating the respective components of the charge. Without impacting the phase in for other service areas, so it's more of an administrative change. Um in in that regard, but will provide more flexibility. Um the second bullet on slide eighteen relates to indexation, so the Development Charges Act. Does give municipalities the ability to index um the charges um on an annual basis or or more frequently if if needed. Um there is a prescribed index under the Development Charges Act that has to be used to do that, that is the non residential construction price index. And that's meant to ensure that the charges somewhat keep pace with inflationary pressures. Because we're not going through and updating the actual capital costs every year, because the bylaw is only updated historically every five years moving forward, perhaps only every ten years. So it's to ensure that the rates themselves keep pace with capital inflation. Um the township's existing bylaw uh provides for a uh optional indexation of the charge. Um which would need to be brought in front of council for approval each year. Uh what we would be recommending is that that annual indexation be made mandatory or automatic on the on January first of each year. And so it would just be a practice that would be employed to always update the charges for January first or on January first. Based on the latest available index, that is the uh most common practice uh when we look at other municipalities across the province. And then the final bullet on slide eighteen relates to the expiry date of the bylaws, so historically bylaws, development church bylaws had a maximum shelf life of five years. And that has now been extended through Bill twenty three, moving forward, your bylaws can live for a maximum of up to ten years. Um which is another reason that we're proposing for these bylaws to be passed separately for each service, because for some services, those capital needs may not change. And you can very well let that by law live for ten years without amendments. Uh but for some other services. More capital needs may come to light as development starts to really pick up and and ha- and take place. So you may be benefiting from updating that bylaw earlier than the ten year um expiry cycle. And again, if you have each service under a separate bylaw, you wouldn't trigger that five year phase in each time for all services. So that's a little bit on the bylaw administration, um slides nineteen speaks to the proposed development church policies with respect to the timing of payments. So generally speaking, these historically development charges were always payable at time of building permit issuance. Um there are now a couple of exceptions to this, we would be recommending that that practice be maintained moving forward. But under the act, there are a couple of exceptions to that, so firstly, for rental housing and institutional developments. Um they are now paying development charges over six equal annual payments, so they're not paying from the date of occupancy. So there's a timing difference from when the development occurs and when the township will ultimately recover their development charges payable by that development. And again, that statute already provided within the act. Um the other change has been that for developments proceeding through either a site plan. Application or zoning by law amendment application. The development charges that they will be paying um when they ultimately come forward for a building permit. Will be based on the rates that were in effect when they submitted their planning application to the township. So again, there could be a pretty big time difference there. Um but there is a limitation on it, so the developer has two years from the time of their planning application being approved. Uh to start coming forward for building permits, otherwise the quad resets, and then again, beyond that two year window, you would again be charging them based on the rates that are in effect at the time. The building permit is uh submitted.
So just so council's aware, Nora Park Phase Four. Will be frozen at two thousand and twenty two, assuming that they will get a building permit um before. It's May of twenty twenty four. So if they get a building permit for that subdivision prior to that date, then they pay the twenty twenty two D Cs not. The D Cs, and so we do have a uh development that will be affected by that.
Never only be one, draw in one permit would.
That's my understanding.
So we are, that is a active topic of discussion, because it's a very new piece of legislation, I think that the. And we will be looking into that a little bit further and we'll follow up with council when we do the public meeting. Um I know we've had some some discussions about it previously, the latest understanding is that it would only relates to the individual permit. So we, the thinking was originally that the first permit for the development would effectively secure their freeze of the rates. Um I think the way that our understanding of that provision is changing is that it would be more on a permit by permit basis.
Oh, that's better.
Permit wouldn't freeze it for the entire development.
That means way more sense, because it could take three years.
That's right.
They could, they do fifty per year, seventy five per year, be three years to collect all the building permits, so that makes way more sense.
Good news, um but on that, could a developer not take, say, three hundred? Uh unit, could they not take all permits out at once in order to get this and then they just pay?
We wouldn't be able to actually process them. We wouldn't process them before the date.
Okay.
So it would be physically impossible. To process them, no, we would have policy in place to prevent that.
Okay, that's just what I, that's what I'm wondering, because it would be.
Here you go, yeah, yeah, they could, they could do all three hundred in the previous rate. Um but yeah. We wouldn't receive them. Because as soon as we receive them and they're deemed a complete application.
You have to.
We have ten days to issue it. It would be physically impossible to issue three hundred in ten days, but we couldn't even review three hundred to see if they're even. Complete at that point, I think um we'd have a reasonable argument to to, I'm not saying that you're not going to drop off ten. Or twenty, you know, that could be a possibility, but as far as that magnitude, I don't. I'm not saying they're not going to try, but we'll have policy placed to prevent that.
Very, perfect. So then related to those installment payments and the development charge freeze which we just uh just discussed, so the. Act has given municipalities the ability to charge interest on both the development charge freeze and the installment payments, there is a cap that has been introduced through Bill twenty three. So the maximum interest rate that municipalities can charge is the average um prime rate plus one percentage points, that's in effect. And there are different adjustment periods on which that's determined, so we'll be adding some wording to the development charges bylaws to ensure that. That ability to charge interest is properly reflected within the bylaws moving forward. And then finally, um last bullet on slide nineteen just speaks to the fact that the township does have through the wording in its bylaws. The ability to enter into agreements with developers for either accelerated or deferred payments of development charges as well, on a case by case basis. So you still have that flexibility moving forward as well. So then on slide uh twenty, uh we're going to look at uh some exemption policies. Um so first of all, the Development Charges Act provides a number of statutory exemptions. Um so types of developments that are statute or the exempt uh from payment of development charges. Uh these are listed on slide twenty, this list has been evolving uh through some of the legislative changes that have occurred since twenty eighteen. Uh some of these preexisted uh prior to that as well, so for example, upper and lower tier. Uh governments, any local boards and school board developments would not pay any development charges to the township. Um various enlargements of residential units or additional secondary residential units. Um would also be exempt now from the payment of development charges subject to some maximums, so for example, someone can add. Up to two additional dwelling units to a singly detached home, whether they're directly attached to the home or ancillary to it without paying development charges. Um furthermore, industrial building expansions up to fifty percent of the existing gross floor area are exempt. But anything beyond the fifty percent exist expansion would be paying development charges. Uh universities are exempt, uh not for profit housing is fully exempt as well as affordable um units. Um or affordable inclusionary zoning units as well. And in the future, affordable units and attainable residential units will be exempt as well, now that piece of legislation hasn't. Come into force yet, we are awaiting regulations around um definitions of affordable and attainable from the province. They have indicated how affordable affordability will be measured, but yeah, it will be related to market. Um uh purchase prices or market rents for rental units, but we don't have a bulletin yet that will specify what those averages are, so we're awaiting that. Excuse me, and for attainable units, those will need to be defined within regulations. And then finally, for rental housing developments. Um they will receive discounts moving forward based on the number of bedrooms within each unit, so for. An apart rental apartment unit with three bedrooms or more, they will receive a twenty five percent discount off the developed, off of the development charge. For two bedroom units, that discount would be twenty percent, and then for all others, rental units, discount will be fifteen percent. So those are the statutory exemptions that have to be observed by all municipalities. But the act also gives municipalities the um authority to introduce exemptions that they deem appropriate for their uh specific context. Um so these are what we call discretionary exemptions. And we'll go through these next, one thing to note with any discretionary exemption is that, or any exemption for that matter, is that the act is very specific in saying that. Any revenue foregone as a result of an exemption policy. Cannot be made up for by increasing the charges on other types of developments. So if you choose to, for example, fully exempt industrial, as some municipalities do. As industrial development is occurring and those development church revenues are not coming in. That revenue shortfall would need to be made up for from non development church sources, so that would fall on taxation. Or in cases where there are water and wastewater. Uh services included on those respective rates, so that's something to always keep in mind when we talk about policies. So on slide twenty one, we have a list of um three um exemptions that are currently in effect under the township exists. Townships existing by law, and that's buildings or structures used as hospitals, um governed by the Public Hospitals Act. Uh affordable housing and then buildings or structures used as farm buildings, so these are all very common exemptions to see. Um across the province, the affordable housing exemption is something that will be ultimately superseded by. Um the act, once we get regulations around that anyhow, so that will be um that statutory exemption effectively moving forward. So then moving forward to slide twenty two, we have a couple more policies to go through here uh with respect to redevelopment credits. So redevelopment credits are a provision that is very commonly witnessed in development charge bylaws. And this applies where a existing property is being redeveloped, so for example, someone demolishes a. Single detached home, or maybe the, there was a fire and the structure burned down and needs to be rebuilt, so they come forward for a building permit. And that building permit would trigger the payment of development charges. But if there was a structure that existed on that property prior to that, prior to the new building permit. You would observe a credit for what existed on the site prior, so if someone is demolishing a singly detached home. And replacing with another singly detached home through this, through this redevelopment credit policy, they would not pay a development charge. Because they're not taking up any more service capacity than prior to the redevelopment. However, let's say someone demolishes a singly detached home and builds a row of five townhouses on the same property. So we would calculate the development charges payable on the five townhouses, but then deduct development charge that would be payable on the singly detached home. To then observe that there was some service capacity that existed on the site before, but there is some incremental service demand resulting from the expanded development. Um there is a two year time limit that's uh that's uh provided for in the township's existing bylaws. If someone has two years from the time of demolition occurring to come forward for a building permit for the redevelopment credit to. Um apply unless the redevelopment is as a result of um a structure being. um apply, unless the redevelopment is as a result of um a structure being destroyed by fire, in which case there is no explicit limit, it just speaks to the fact that the redevelopment should occur within a reasonable timeframe. So those are redevelopment credits, and then finally, we have one more policy on slide twenty-three, which has to do with other credits. Um so the, the township's bylaw doesn't include a credit to the calculation of development charges where either lot levies were previously paid or um development charges were previously paid, subject to the applicant providing approval of payment. So that summarizes the policies, um and then finally, we move forward to slide twenty-five. The next steps, uh so we would be happy to receive uh feedback and questions that council may have. Um our procedurally, our next steps will be to publish the development charges background study on the township's website. Uh we are uh going to be doing that on October twelfth. Uh we do need to do that at least sixty days prior to council considering approval of the new bylaws. So there's a very firm time limitation on that. We then need to undertake a uh statutory public meeting. That's a very, maybe a more condensed version of the presentation that was provided today, but also providing the public with an opportunity to um to ask questions and provide input into the process. That public meeting will take place on November fourteenth. And then finally, uh we will be asking council to approve the development charges background study and consider adoption of the new development charge bylaws on December twelfth. Um and that would put you in a position to have a new bylaw in place to replace the existing one, which will be expired January first. And that's it in terms of the presentation, happy to again take any, any questions that you might have.
Any questions of Peter, council?
Uh Deputy Mayor Burr.
Uh thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. Um it makes a lot more sense when you go through it step by step as well. Um I have a question either for you or Candace. When we have our reserve funds, is there, I can never remember this, is there a timeline when those reserve funds for these charges have to be used? Or can they keep being, um can the accumulation keep building? Or is?
We don't have that problem.
No, I know, I know, but is there?
Peter, can we enter under the new legislation?
Absolutely, so there have been some changes in that regard, so historically, there was no limit. So municipality, that's recognizing that a lot of the needs um or you may need to collect development charges in some cases over several years to get to the point where you will actually fund that growth-related project. So we are looking at fairly long-term needs in that regard. There still is no limitation on how quickly you need to use the funds. However, the province has um required now, moving forward, starting this year, that municipalities at the beginning of the year for the hard services, so roads and related stormwater, water and wastewater. So for in your case, that would really be applicable to the roads and related component of the church. The municipality has to allocate, spend or allocate at least sixty percent of the money in that reserve fund. Now allocating just means you're indicating which specific needs those funds have been earmarked for, but there's no limit as to when you, and that could change year after year as well.
Thank you, and follow up as well.
Go ahead.
Um last, then one more question and then carry on. Um so a twenty-eight percent increase and a sixty-two percent increase um between the village and the rest of the township. That's a lot, like, you know, and it's, it's a surprise. Um now, you did say that you can do a maximum with a phase in a five years. You can do a maximum of eighty percent of that in year one. Could you do less than that? Could you do a sixty percent and then carry on the four years, ten percent after that? Is that doable as well? It's just the maximum is eight.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, council? Well, thanks again, Peter, that was very formal.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Councillors, we uh have a recommended motion. And I think we've all seen it, and that's that the council, the township of Asfodale Norwood receives this presentation from Watson and Associate Economics Limited for for information, and further, the council, the township of Asfodale Norwood directs staff to publish and develop the development charges background study and draft bylaw on the township's website on or before October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. And further, that the council, the township of Asfodale Norwood authorized this township staff and Watson and Associate Economics Limited to hold a statutory public meeting on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Moved by councillor, with a comment within, moved by councillor Walsh, uh second for the uh Deputy Mayor Burr, uh go ahead.
Councillor Walsh? Yeah, through you, Mayor. Uh I think we do have a public consultation, and you walk us through it, and you do the comparison chart on non-residential, that there definitely is a significant jump there, but we really weren't comparing out this bad book, we're, we're looking at the charges from now it's non-residential being twenty-five percent, and before we were using the tax of the sus, like, I think we really wanna make that clear in the public meetings, so people really understand that there's a jump, but there's a reason behind why it's a jump, that's we're using a different approach to the process. That's probably more intuitive than that's telling people who are born from, back from the dollar to five dollars, so people will be wondering why.
Noted, again.
Um there's also the um ability, so a lot of times when you, you wanna track commercial development, right? That's the goal, you wanna track commercial development to help dilute the residential tax base, that's what you know, assists um with the cost of running the corporation. So what some municipalities in the province have done is you uh, you can't exempt development charges, like you can't, if someone, oh, I wanna build this commercial development municipality, we want to see it. Um but it's sixty thousand dollars DC, and that is cost prohibitive for the development moving forward. We wouldn't have the ability to waive it or exempt it, or at least we shouldn't. Uh but there is the ability through the community improvement plan, so through the, through the CIP profit that we're gonna be taking a look at. Because of the significant change, we have the ability through our CIP bylaw to do a grant program as far as, okay, we'll collect the DC from you, but you're gonna build this massive commercial development, bring fifty jobs, a hundred jobs, but we're gonna give you fifty percent of that DC back in a grant to ensure that that commercial comes. So a lot of times municipalities are using that mechanism to ensure that they're able to attract the commercial development without affecting the mechanism and the intent of the DC bylaw.
And, and I like that approach, cause we, we don't wanna turn down that commercial or industrial opportunities to come, but this is kind of a way to to leave our bylaw as it is.
Yeah, cause you don't wanna start opening those conversations, yeah.
That's a good point, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? A motion's carried.
Thank you, Peter.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, seven is afternoon, everyone.
Can I go into? Okay, I'm looking, it's almost two o'clock. I'm looking for a motion to suspend our regular council meeting at one fifty-eight and enter into a public hearing to consider a minor variance application. Uh councillor Walsh, second by councillor Hodge Greaves. Uh discussion, all in favor? Motion's carried. Uh the Committee of Adjustment for the Corporation of the Township of Asfodale Norwood will hold a public hearing on section forty-five of the Planning Act our O nineteen ninety on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three at two P M to consider an application for minor variance. At this point, I will wel- welcome introductory remarks from councillor Wilford and declaration of a cunary interest, I will declare one and turn this meeting over to Deputy Mayor Burr.
All right, thank you, Mayor Wilford. Um so this time, because Ed is away, um I will have um our CEO, Candace White, do the, do the report. And again, it's the notice of a, a complete application and public hearing for minor variance for the Planning Act nineteen ninety. And it went to all applicable agencies and property owners within a hundred and twenty meters of the subject site. Notice of complete application and public hearing for minor variance was also posted on the website for general public and posted on the subject site. And the file number is A dash oh one dash twenty twenty-three Wilford on eighty-six Queen Street in Norwood. And Candace, do you wanna take it from here or?
Um sure, that's fine, thank you Deputy Mayor. So before we get started, just some legalities to work through. If a person does not make oral submissions at the public hearing or make written submission to the committee before the decision is final and binding, the person is not entitled to appeal the committee's decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. If a person does not make oral submissions at the public hearing or make written submissions to the committee before the decision is final and binding, the person may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal. Unless it is in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So what you have in front of you is minor variance application known as A dash year one dash twenty twenty-three for a Mr. Patrick and Mrs. Donna Wilford. Um the subject lands are known as eighty-six Queen Street, and the purpose and the effect of the minor variance would allow for the construction of an attached garage to the dwelling. Um the Wilfords have submitted an application to the committee um for reduction of the required minimum side yard setback of one point two meters from section five point two point one of the zoning bylaw to zero point nine meters, so very minor in nature. Committee of Adjustment um hearings has to look at a series of four tests. And those tests being that it needs to be minor in nature, that it needs to be desirable and appropriate development or the use of the land, so it's conducive basically to the area in which the property exists. Maintain the general intent and purpose of the township zoning bylaw and maintain the general intent and pur- purpose of the official plan. It is the opinion of township staff that this minor setback adjustment does meet uh the four tests. And it is minor in nature, and the building um of an attached garage does not interrupt the surround, the makeup of the surrounding area. Um it was circulated, as Deputy Mayor Burr stated at the beginning of the hearing, and no comments have been received. Township staff did receive some questions um in regards to when the notice went out, to when the sign was erected on the property. Some questions were brought forward, um questions were answered, just basically, a lot of it is not understanding what a minor variance is, unless you've lived through that process. So most of the questions were in relation to that and uh easily answered, um and no formal comments received against the application. Um approving the minor variance application will reduce the side yard setback to zero point nine meters from one point two meters, um therefore permitting the owner to construct in addition to their dwelling. That stated the building permit process is applicable. So this doesn't automatically grant that the uh, that it, the building can automatically be constructed. They have to follow the building permit process and go through those channels as well uh with the building department, through the chief building official. Attached in your council meeting agenda, you will see the notice of hearing of application. Uh you will see a, a map that clearly uh lays out um where the proposed attached garage is going to be laid out on the property. And the appropriate application that spells out the details, uh restricted land use notice uh with no concerns from the Conservation Authority was also included in the package, um and the sketch requirements have been, have been met. Um there's really not much more to say about the application, it's pretty straightforward. Um but I will leave it to the committee to ask any questions, and I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Miss. Um so are there any questions before I go on to the recommendation for staff at this point?
Just more clarity, so basically it's a nine-inch difference we're talking about from a minor variance standpoint, it meets the test, no problem. Obviously, the neighbor on that side has not having any issues with it.
Has not raised any concerns.
Okay. Well, that clarity.
Okay, any other questions from council? All right, so we have a recommendation in force that the Committee of Adjustment of the Township of Asfodale Norwood accepts this report regarding minor variance application A dash oh one dash twenty twenty-three Wilford for information. And further, the Committee of Adjustment of the Township of Asfodale Norwood accrues minor variance application A dash oh one dash twenty twenty-three Wilford as submitted, and have a motion please. Councillor Walsh, second, councillor War, all in favor of the motion? And that is carried, and that is to end, um oh.
There is one more thing, so um as committee of adjustment decisions, um I will pass this around because you need to sign um that you were in favor or opposed of the decision, um and then sort of go back around to me, and so once we've done that, we can close it.
Oh, okay, okay, so just wait till a bit of minutes and then?
Yes, and thank you.
Very well. Done a lot of minor variances.
No.
In either term, this term was first, I think.
Yes, in this term, oh definitely in this term, yeah. I think there's only been more in the last ten years.
Yeah, why do you think? Well, thank you. Okay, thank you. So now that that is taken here, uh we will adjourn the public meeting, the public hearing held September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, and that is adjourned at two oh seven P M. And we will resume the regular meeting of councils, so do I have a motion for adjournment? The public meeting, councillor Hodge Greaves, and second by councillor War, all in favor? Very good, and could I just um have a motion to just have a two-minute recess so we can get our mayor back in here? Councillor Hodge Greaves, councillor War, fair Walsh, sorry, all in favor? All right, and it's two oh seven now, so back in your seats at two ten, because that sound. All right, thank you, Matt.
Great hearing. Motion to come out of recess, council, uh councillor Walsh, Deputy Mayor Burr, all in favor? A motion's carried. And we'll move on to staff reports. Peter DeShane, manager of Public Works and Environmental Services, Norwood landfill closure tender results.
Uh thank you, through you, Mayor. Uh so this report is regarding the Norwood landfill closure tender results. On August tenth, twenty twenty-three, at twelve noon, bits were opened for tender twenty twenty-three dash oh nine Norwood landfill closure. The tender included the works necessary to complete the closure uh in accordance with the current ECA enclosure plan. Uh there was one submission received from Dream Brothers Escavating Limited, and the tender came in at nine hundred and three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars plus H S T. It should be noted that in a curtain, in accordance with our current ECA and approved design and operations report, uh the township was required to complete the closure in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh staff have requested a three-to-five-year extension with the MECP to complete the closure and to accumulate the required budget amount. Staff will be able to utilize the current tender package and drawings at the time of re-tender. And staff will advise council of response from the MECP and the new closure deadline. Financial implications, the twenty twenty-three environmental budget included three hundred thousand dollars for the tendered scope of work, including engineering design, tender preparation and contract administration. Staff will include reserve allocation amounts in future budgets in order to accumulate the required amount to complete the work. In conclusion, uh Dream Brothers Escavating Limited met the report's specifications of the tender. However, the tender amount is not within the approved twenty twenty-three environmental capital budget, and therefore staff are not recommending that the tender be awarded. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Um we have a recommendation, council, that the council and township of Asfodale Norwood accepts this report regarding the Norwood landfill site closure and tender results for information, moved by councillor War with a question. Councillor Walsh.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, uh to Candace or Peter. Disappointing with the, the results of the tender, obviously, but I was just wondering, is there any concern uh about getting the five-year extension uh with the MECP, if there's any any thought process to that?
Um we have neighboring municipalities that we're aware of that have received two and three extensions. Um we've never, we haven't received a formal extension, so we're, we're optimistic and, and hopeful, obviously, it's So we're we're optimistic and and hopeful. Obviously, it's M E C P's decision. Um, we're hopeful to get five years. I, my only concern would be that they'll come in at me potentially like a three year um extension. We may not get to five. Um, but I am optimistic that we'll get an extension.
Any other questions? Council Walsh?
And just kind of all up to the Council War. So we have three hundred thousand dollars in the budget, about a million dollar project. That we need, we would need three years to get.
No, we need five. We need five. Um, that said, there is going to be um some ability, you know, couple of things there are at play. One, I think if we get the extension, um we'll have the ability to provide a longer lead time to the project, um which could essentially entice it to get more bids, a more competitive process. Um, and how in the tender, we did include the contractor to uh place topsoil and we um would be taking that on in-house. So Peter had chat, it would be about two hundred thousand dollars in savings in today's dollars. So you know, we're down to seven hundred and we have three hundred, so we need four hundred. Um, so that would be a hundred thousand dollars approximately per year for five years to incorporate the inflation.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Um, our CEO just answered the question about any interest. So thank you.
When you mentioned I uh go ahead, uh, Councilor Hodge Grease.
Um, just I guess the concern is always uh through you, Mayor, the concern is always if we if the prices still go up, so we'll save. So there's almost that risk as well. So it could still be without.
We will have no choice.
At that point.
Okay, at that point, whatever it's it, whatever it tenders at, um it'll be what it'll be. And we'll have to adjust uh adjust accordingly. Um, there's really nothing else for the township to take on. I mean, a lot of it is the purchasing of the material and we don't have the material in on any municipally owned properties. Um, and and placing the topsoil, I don't know if Peter wants to interject, but it's going to be a significant undertaking by township staff.
But the topsoil will be all the ditch material that you get in the next three years will be stopped by one of our pits, will it not?
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor. Uh, so there is currently actually some topsoil stockpiled near the transfer station already, which we'll utilize and any deficit of that, we would, we would use ditch material or or whatever we have stockpiled.
Which is a lot of topsoil, just need screened, whatever.
But it, honestly, it just has to grow. Uh, vegetation.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all in favor of the motion that's presented? Our motion is carried. Peter, um, you might as well go on with the twenty twenty three backhoe tender results.
Uh, thank you uh through you, Mayor. So this report is regarding the twenty twenty three uh lower backhoe tender results. Uh, so for this process, um, staff recognize that there are other options out there such as like group purchasing organizations or D P Os, um and they offer benefits uh to municipalities. Um, uh to leverage new purchasing opportunities or previously established contracts um that are, and these are fully compliant with public sector purchasing guidelines and relevant trade agreements. One of the big benefits uh to going through one of these programs is that it allows staff to contact uh approved vendors directly uh to seek out pricing with no commitment uh to purchase. Um, so we went, uh, we we received a presentation um a while ago, staff did. And through the last canoe procurement group, um which is not for fa- non-for-profit. And it's municipally owned group purchasing organization that partners with uh municipal associations such as L A S or local authority services. Um, and they're across Canada. So they uh, what canoe does is they basically do the tendering process for the municipalities uh to get pricing from uh vendors through Canada, um such as John Deere and Cat, as you will see, um for preferred pricing uh for municipalities to take advantage of. So as I, as I stated, uh, we received the presentation from uh the canoe program earlier this year. Um, and uh became a member of the canoe program, which is free uh to municipalities. And uh again, it allows us to contact vendors directly for pricing. So as you can see through the ten- tendering process uh that currently exists, um, there's a list of vendors here that uh could supply backhoes and they're ranking in order uh from one to four. There, there are other vendors there, but I just listed the top four um uh for today's purposes. Um, so the tender uh that canoe did resulted in Cat um Caterpillar Inc. offering a twenty two percent discount off the M S R P for backhoes loaders and John Deere offering a forty one percent discount off M S R P for backhoes loaders. Um, I should note that uh the staff at other words are very familiar with both Caterpillar and John Deere equipment and are quite satisfied that either one uh would perform as needed. So uh given that uh we're members now and uh gives us the ability to contact the vendors, uh staff did contact Tarmac Cat of Peterborough and Brand Equipment of Peterborough uh to get pricing on a a backhoe loader. So quotations were received on or before August thirty first, twenty twenty three. Um, and that requested the supply and delivery of a twenty twenty three lower backhoe with the following provisional items. Uh hydraulic thumb, uh a ditching bucket, uh a sixty inch pellet forks, a ten foot snow pusher, a root brush grapple and a power sweeper. So the two submissions that were received, as you can see here, um including the provisional items, uh Tarmac Cat comes in at two hundred and sixty thousand one hundred dollars plus H S T. And brand equipment came in at two hundred eighty four thousand five hundred and twenty dollars plus H S T. Um, in speaking with the two vendors, um we are expected uh to see the lower backhoe on or before the end of uh twenty twenty three. The twenty twenty three capital budget included two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for the supply of the twenty twenty three lower backhoe. And from Tarmac Cat, as you can see, net of the H S T rebate, it comes in at two hundred and seventy two thousand nine seventy nine forty two, just shy of the uh approved budget. So in conclusion, staff recommend that the township of Askinor Norwood use the group purchasing organization uh lab canoe, which leverages the collective buying power of its members to negotiate better prices and terms for goods and services for the procurement of the twenty twenty three lower backhoe and for future equipment purchases when applicable. The bid submitted by Tarmac Cat, Peter met the required specifications on the request. And the tendered amount net of H S T is within the approved twenty twenty three public works capital budget. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Peter. Um, I looked at again under budget, not a lot, but it is under budget. Yes, if it comes in time, could be the next thing. Um, recommendation that the council of the township of Askinor Norwood accepts this report regarding the twenty twenty three loader backhoe tender results for information. And further, that the council of the township of Askinor Norwood authorizes the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement between Tarmac Cat and the township of Askinor Norwood for the supply and delivery of a twenty twenty three loader backhoe in the amount of two hundred and sixty nine thousand eight dollars and forty four cents exclusive of H S T. Moved by Deputy Mayor Bert with a comment, uh second by Council War. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for you. Uh, thank you for the report here. Um, I must admit, I'm a little personal, John, here, but I'm here with the cats. And uh just what's that?
So is.
Yeah, I, and I'd like to hear that that staff and those who will be running it are happy with either one. And I think it's great that they're both local. Um, I think that says a lot, especially after all the issues we've had with the greater and having somebody local is is ideal. Um, and it's uh, I did get the model number four twenty X E cat, correct? Okay, and the the um, it looked like the cat offered a better warranty, which I think is a big thing. And I just had a question about the warranty. Once you come to that end of like the twelve months for the bumper to bumper and the four year six thousand hour. At that point, can you purchase extended warranty or do you have to do that at the beginning of the purchase? I just love to.
No, we can do it. Um, I think anytime within the four years.
Within that four years. Okay, just just wondered about that. And then um, yeah, the the attachments look good. The um, what was it? The um, root and brush grapple, is that four and one bucket? Is that what you call one bucket or is that different?
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor. No, it's it's quite different. Actually, it looks um almost like a a set of tine forks with a grapple, a hydraulic grapple,
Okay.
uh specifically designed for handling brush um and trees and roots.
Right.
If we'd had one um during the storm, it would have been amazing. Um, so we can see a lot of benefit to getting that.
Yeah, even like the thumb and the ditching bucket, you pretty much need.
Yes, definitely.
You you can't do without those.
Definitely.
Okay, and then um, just one more if I can.
Go ahead.
Um, the disposal will be through Gov Deals, correct, or traded?
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor. Yes, that's correct. It will be through Gov Deals. Uh, we've had good, good luck with and good experiences with Gov Deals, so.
Any anticipated amount, do you think?
Um, I suspect uh the way things are right now and and the price of things that we would get at least thirty thirty, thirty five thousand out of our backhoe.
Okay, thank you.
Council War.
Uh, thank you to you, Mayor, Peter. Um, it's nice to see that this um process is working through the last minute.
Yeah.
Uh, but you um Deputy Mayor Bert, uh, so I have one question for the uh the Gov Dev uh where where it was going. But the second one, have we had a power sweeper attachment before? Is this a new uh tool?
Thank you through you, Mayor. Yes, we do currently have one on our backhoe, um which it's basically at the end of its its life. So it's it's time to replace it, but we're going in a little bit different direction. We're getting a power sweeper, but this one has pickup capabilities, um which is going to allow us to pick up uh any winter sand that that we uh sweep off the roads. And we're going to screen it, screen it and reuse it. So there'd be some environmental um positive aspects there and as well as some cost saving when it comes to winter sand um purchasing as well. So it's kind of a.
This older brush will go with the backhoe.
That's correct.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Council Walsh?
This equipment, uh interim voting amount is two sixty nine zero zero eight forty four cents. But the tender amount is two sixty eight one hundred.
Sorry, that's probably a typo. It should be two sixty eight one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should be two sixty eight one hundred?
Yeah, okay. I built there.
Any other questions, Council? All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Moving along to our three, municipal master facilities plan.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So as council is aware, in the twenty twenty three municipal operating budget, we included for a forty thousand dollar allocation to complete a municipal faster. No, I mean, as a whole master facilities plan, I wanted it faster, but um, so we have been fortunate enough to um be able to to receive a proposal from Eco View, um who is wanting to consult with Adrian Harrop. Um, that Harrop, Adrian Harrop has worked in the township on multiple um studies as well as Eco View as well. They've done a lot of the planning justification reports that we've received from developers, actually. So they've got a pretty good handle on the development and the growth and where the municipality is headed. And so what we've worked with them and what we are proposing is a four phase approach. So phase one is a project initiation and research, um which is basically the kickoff with township staff that's going to identify, you know, who the key stakeholders are, the priorities, challenges, you know, basically a squad analysis. This phase will analyze space and program utilization to implement stakeholder needs, audit the existing landed facilities um that is possible for new or revised land use opportunities for the next ten to twenty years. Then we're going to head into phase two, which is stakeholder engagement. Um, you can use some various methods to facilitate discussion, um build stakeholder consensus. Uh, two surveys will be released, a public survey for residents, businesses, user groups, community groups and other key stakeholders, and then a council specific survey. These surveys will be available digitally and in paper format, and then we're going to facilitate uh some user group um focus group sessions. Um, preferably they will be um held in person, but I suspect it may be hybrid because we're finding that a lot of people, you know, with the time of year that it is with illness, they like to zoom in versus attend and will be able to accommodate that. Um, phase three is the planning and and development, um which will include an executive summary recommendation and details of how the plan should be implemented and how it will be monitored over time. A summary of individual projects, recommended sequencing of tasks and a method and schedule for updating and improving the plan. And then of course, phase four is the presentation to council for adoption. There isn't going to be dollar figures attached to the recommendations. Um, be and because the plan is going to lay out uh potentially you are, you have a deficit in this area. Um, we're obviously going to be looking at our current medical center. It needs, the recommendation is it needs to be repurposed to A or it needs to be declared surplus and sold, whatever the recommendation is. Um, then that will become a budgetary item and whatever year we're gonna, we're gonna tackle that. Um, I'm kind of leaning away putting in financial into these plans because it's just we adopt them in good faith and then we go out to tender or we try to build it. So it's really a budgetary exercise. Um, and some of it is going to be simply some things won't even have a financial cost to them and then other things will have a large financial cost to them potentially. So but as of right now, Eco View is not going to be undertaking the task of assigning financial um costs to that. We will do that um in budget years to ensure that it's actually relevant costing. Um, and the proposal is within the township's budget, um as it comes in at thirty nine thousand six hundred eighty one exclusive of H S T. Um, and we're going to get started right away. So we got uh have the completion of the plan to present to council in the spring of twenty twenty four, which will then um feed right into next year's budget talks. It's just um with the R and P process and procurement being a bit more painful than anticipated as far as securing a consultant to take on the scope of work. It's not feasible to be able to feed into twenty twenty four budget. We're well in, yeah, well underway in in finalizing next year's budget. And I wanted to ensure that we have an appropriate um engagement process and that council will get a a good plan and trying to slam it in before December just wasn't sitting right with me. So um it's going to feed next year and subsequent years. So I will leave it to council with any questions.
So we have a recommended motion that the county, the township of Askinor Norwood accepts this report regarding the municipal master facilities plan for information. Further, that the council of township of Askinor Norwood authorize Eco Bell, Eco Boo Consulting Services Incorporated to complete the municipal facilities masters plan for the township of Askinor Norwood for an upset will limit amount of thirty nine thousand six hundred and eighty one dollars exclusive of H S T. And I have a mover, please. Uh, Council Hodge Grease and Council War, discussion. Council Hodge Grease.
Uh, through you, Mayor. Um, Candice, under stakeholder engagement, it says two surveys being released and then project team facilitating current user focus groups. Is there a way to, is people who participate in the survey, will they be able to ask to be included in a focus group as well to expand it beyond to allow the public greater engagement in the process and consultation process as opposed to just reaching out to existing people?
Uh, oh, most definitely. Um. The focus groups tend to be round table discussions.
Yeah.
Um, so we would limit the number of people that could participate. So we, it doesn't um, so it can still be like, you know, conducive to the the conversation, but yes. Answer your question, a limited number, but yes.
But so right. Be necessarily just asking existing, so existing users, we will put it out to the public. If they want to be engaged, they can be that.
There'll be a registration date, yes. So well, there'll be a certain number of public seats made available. You can register by this date, first come, first served, and when that number is full. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Bert?
Uh, yeah, thank you through you. Uh, just a comment. I've been looking forward to seeing this, uh, report come forward for a long time. And I think, um, from a, from a council perspective, not only this council, but councils, you know, down the road. I think this is going to be a very important document that we receive. So, um, I like the idea that we're taking care of mine. There's no rush. Let's get this done right. And move, move forward. And so, so I'm glad we're, we're not rushing into this. Um, let's take the time, let's do it right because it is going to be a very important document. My honest.
Counselor Warren.
Um, thank you, three mayor. Just to take on that, deputy mayor, um, I think it's, it's a well needed. Uh, I've been looking forward to this as well, and I wanted to compliment the phased and approach. I like how there's four phases. There's going to be lots of, uh, public consultation. People will know that it's happening because it's not being rushed. And so I just wanted to say, I really do appreciate this, uh, the way that this is being laid out. So I look forward to the results in the spring.
You're welcome.
Okay, council is all favor to the motion. That motion's carried. Moving on to our four draft administration budget, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, mayor. So speaking of budgets, um, in front of council is the draft administration budget. Um, the draft budget poses an nominal increase of six thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars or approximately one percent. Areas of significant impact include, um, increase in bank interest revenue due to elevated interest rates, um, increase in payroll costs. Um, so January first of twenty twenty-four sees the implementation of the tier-two C P P program. Um, so we, we've been known that that's gonna, that's been coming, and so we're going to see that implemented as of January one. Obviously, it's to, um, assist the seniors and to build that pocket of money for sustainability of the C P P program, which is really, really important. Um, there was a change in Omer's policy. Um, so we have the largest number of, um, Omer's participants that we have ever had in this municipality as that the criteria has been removed, um, to enter into that program. And obviously, um, anything less than approximately fifty-three thousand a year, we have to, it's nine percent of the gross of that person's income that the municipality has to match. Anything above that is fourteen point nine percent. So it is a significant, um, contribution that we're seeing there. Uh, Matthew Savino from S H R P, um, our H R consultant, has, um, sent out an email. Um, all of the lower tier municipalities use S H R P. He's recommending a three to four percent increase to the salary grid to assist with the five-year review that we are mandated to do to try to, uh, not see a huge impact in that one year. Um, we did three percent in twenty twenty-three. I'm hoping that come twenty twenty-five, we can go back to our traditional two percent. The addition of a finance and capital administrator budgeted in port Q four of twenty twenty-three, but not yet recruited. So it was included in this year's budget, so that'll continue in twenty twenty-four. Asset management plan update, that's a thirty thousand dollar allocation for reserves that you're seeing in the department. Um, and the rest of the operations in regards to, uh, revenues and office supplies and telephone and all of those sorts of things, annual audit expenditures, um, all of that stuff is relatively, um, the same that you've seen in previous years. There's no huge impact or any major changes being proposed for the most part across the board. Most of it is involuntary change. I, I will leave it to council for any questions.
Uh, deputy mayor.
Uh, thank you through you. Um, just in the, um, insurance fifteen percent increase, we won't know that exactly until towards the end of the year, correct?
That's right.
That's the anticipation.
That's the, the earmark that I put in there.
Okay, because what was it?
Eighteen.
Been seventeen percent, eighteen, okay, okay, well, that's all for fifteen. And then, um, the electronics documents project, that's for records at the township, not the historical center.
Uh, yeah, so every year we budget three hundred dollars. So we'll send in the twenty twenty-three minutes and bylaws. Um, and they will upload them to our portal. That costs us three hundred dollars a year. We want some.
So, uh, can we have a motion that the town, uh, township of Assedown Norwood accepts the report regarding the twenty twenty-four draft administration budget for information moved by deputy, or moved by counselor Hodgson, second by counselor Walsh. Any more discussion? All in favor of that motion? That motion's carried. Draft recreation budget, uh, twenty twenty-four, Candace.
Okay, so the recreation and community center, it, um, poses a twenty-five percent or approximately seventy-two thousand dollar increase in revenues, a seven percent or forty thousand dollar increase in expenses, and a sixty thousand dollar increase in capital for an overall levy increase of about twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, areas of significant impact include a rebound in usage of the facility, which has resulted in an increase in, uh, revenues. Um, the staff of the department are, um, have been exceptionally efficient and proficient in, um, securing, um, ice rentals. Um, um, the ice rental revenues, um, are, I haven't seen them this high, so it's, uh, really utilizing the, the time. Uh, reallocation of staff wages, council has seen this before with actual duties and assignments. So we're seeing a decrease in operator and attendant wages, but an increase in canteen wages. And it all depends on the, the complement of staff that we have at the time. A lot of time we have attendance slash canteen operators, so they do both. Then when the timesheets get submitted, those shifts aren't separated out. So maybe they, they're signed up in payroll as an attendant, but they worked a canteen shift, so all the wages went to attendant wages and not canteen. So that's overall the bottom line for the department really is irrelevant. Um, but what we're seeing is we're not having that, um, cross this year. And we're also seeing, um, and you can see in the, um, spreadsheet that canteen, uh, revenues are, are, are really high. So, you know, just be open more, selling a different complement of products, um, increasing the cost of those products at the same time to, to keep up. But things are going very, very well in that regard. Um, replacement of, um, the millennium room lobby washer roof. I don't know if you've, uh, been in the facility. Uh, he's saying you've seen some buckets in rem, um, catching the drips. Um, so we need to tackle that. Um, that's going to be funded from reserves. Uh, the walk-in freezer installation should remove all the little plug-in freezers in the canteen. There's going to be new efficiency funding that we received four years ago that's left over to take that on. I don't see much better use for that efficiency funding than that. Um, it's going to be great. It's going to open up a lot of space and going to use a lot less hydro. And I don't, some of those freezers are going to be time for replacement. And I just don't really see the need of all these little plug-in freezers everywhere. Um, the addition of streetlights for the all-wheels park and pickleball court for increased safety and, and usage, that's been identified. So we'll be utilizing efficiency funding for that as well. Uh, two replacement hockey nets, just through to age. Uh, ten spin bikes to host spin classes in the studio room, uh, will charge a fee to attend those classes to help increase the utilization of that space. There has definitely been, um, an ask, you know, for those types of classes to be offered there. And then the most significant, of course, um, we've been seeing in the last couple of years is the replacement of the chiller and condenser. Uh, originally, we had that project split apart into components, but, but. The best way I can explain it, it's as if the building was built around those components, um, with not a lot of foresight into how those components will be removed when it's time to replace them. Um, so basically, we have saw them apart and break them up into chunks or remove a wall or a section of a wall. It's, um, so we decided that instead of having that upheaval twice, um, we would, we worked with our refrigeration consultant and decided that upheaval into that room and reconfiguring that room with both of those components being replaced at the same time makes the most, the most sense. Plus procuring them together may end up with a, a better, uh, a better price at the end of the day. Specifically for insulation, you're not paying for that deployment and installation and upheaval site. Um, so, yeah, I think all in all, it's going to be great. We're seeing the impact of the fitness center still feeling that out. Uh, still learning the ebbs and flows of that center, membership, uh, revenues are great. Really happy to follow that. Um, still impact on township staff time. We're still, we're working with that. Definitely need to have someone here all the time based on that facility being here. Um, but all in all, it's working out. We have a full complement of staff. Um, they're all trained and ice is up and running and everything's going well. And hopefully twenty twenty-four, they have everything we need here to help the failing assets for the, for the facility and, and keep the surrounding grounds and everything looking great for the resident. So I'll leave with council for any questions.
We have a motion that the county and township of Assedown Norwood accepts this report regarding the twenty twenty-four draft recreation budget for information. Counselor War, counselor Walsh, any more discussion? Uh, deputy mayor Bert.
Uh, thank you, three mayor. Um, just a quick question, Candace. Uh, we have the Canada Day revenue and Canada Day expenses. Um, where does the revenue come from?
Grant.
Grant.
A grant and they're, um, we, we're going to go for donations this year.
Okay. I just was, I wasn't sure about that because I knew the, the day itself was free. And, yeah, and I had to see the products to the best.
Uh, counselor Hodgson.
Uh, just a couple of questions. What are lounge supplies? It's a line item on the budget. I just.
So it's bar supplies, so it's a purchasing of alcohol to have the lounge open.
Okay, I didn't know what room that meant. Um, the other one was capital. Is there talk of CCTV video for the all-wheels park and the pickleball as part of any kind of, when you're putting in lights?
Like, um, like cameras?
Cameras.
To watch it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Not to watch for security.
No, I understand what you mean. Uh, to get eyes on it?
Yeah.
Um, yes. Um, but it's not included in that line item. Um, it's in a different line item. But we, once the lights are there, then we'll be able to see and we're going to have, um, one or two cameras installed out there. Yeah.
Because I know graffiti's been.
It has been, unfortunately, yes.
Uh, one more question. Spin bikes, is they're expensive?
Um.
Is, what's the vision for that? Is that an independent person doing that or is that township-run class? And my other question is, it's not, you know, last meeting, we had the age-friendly discussion and spin bikes aren't perhaps the most age-friendly activity. I'm just wondering, it's a big chunk of money for, like, how much demand is there for spin bikes and who's going to offer that class?
Okay, so as of now, we are looking at putting out an R F P. So we would put out a request for proposal to have, uh, someone submit proposals. So if you're a fitness instructor, you can submit a proposal. You can submit a bid in order for us to award you being the fitness instructor, um, for the township. So it'd be township offered services, uh, classes that we would charge, uh, for those classes and then, uh, be reimbursed through the membership to participate in those classes. Um, there, depending on the use, we've been told it's a seven to eight year, uh, in some, if it's low use or gentle use, you can get ten years out of them. Um, so when you break that down, it's about three thousand dollars per year. We're able to get the ten years out of it, um, to recoup that money back through membership. Um, when we put out the master recreation plan to build a fitness center, uh, spin classes was the number one ask for classes to be offered. Up next was, uh, yoga and other classes that are already being offered in other facilities in the township. So we thought we would start here and see if we can kind of build that base because it needs a budgetary item to support. If we're able to recruit someone through the R F P process, um, then maybe that person, our hope is, has some other things. Maybe they do zumba, maybe they do some other newer, maybe more, as you're saying, senior specific type classes. And then we can maybe build on that, but there wouldn't have to be the budgetary, we could just afford that without a budgetary aspect of it because they're likely not need of equipment that would be, uh, required. So come, we get someone in, come next July, August, September, we get a person in, in that would like to offer a different type of class. Maybe they just need some math. Like, we don't need to discuss it at this stage of the game because we don't need the budget.
But spin bikes, you need the budget.
But spin bikes, we need the budget. Yeah, that's why we're talking about it now. Yeah.
Okay, and the R F P, the person, would that person then be employed by the township or they get their money from who attends their class?
No, so they.
That's part I don't.
They would invoice us as a company.
Okay.
We would pay their invoice, um, and, but we would also collect the membership money to offset the cost of that invoice we're paying that person.
Yeah, okay, so the township still collects the membership money plus the class fees?
Correct.
And does the admin on the class fees and then the instructor invoices the township for their time?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, trying to avoid the increase, don't want to add another staff person just with the payroll cost increase and the Omer's and everything, just trying to avoid that if at all possible. But knowing that we want to utilize that space and we get asked on a very, very consistent basis. Well, we're going to start offering classes in there and specifically spin classes.
Okay, as long as there is a need, because it's a big chunk of money.
It's a huge chunk of money. It's probably the only piece of equipment. And we chatted about it back when, um, you know, if we would have had room in the grant funding, um, when we purchased it to outside of the cost of everything else going in, um, fire, we would have purchased a spin bike under the grant funding. It was part of the original plan based on the master recreation plan survey, but the, the fines just weren't left in the grant. We had to kind of exhausted that.
Counselor Walsh.
You're welcome. Um, thank you, three mayor, uh, to Candace, if possible. Um, so the recreational budget, my first thing, is just for this facility, really. Like, it doesn't include anything, uh, say, the last of park or anything.
No, that's parks budget.
That's a parks budget. So recreation's only here, just, uh, and so the other thing. So, uh, I see that under, uh, the line for outdoor break, there is five thousand dollars set aside for the maintaining of the break, or what is that?
Now, that was just basically, so we've always had five thousand dollars in that line item traditionally every year. And in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, it got allocated to the outdoor ring. So it's more just me highlighting, not saying you have to give it to that because you're going to see a delegation coming forward here. But we've always had five thousand dollars in recreational programming. So just because you're getting five thousand dollars recreational programming, that doesn't mean it's going to the outdoor ring.
Yeah, it could be maybe for, uh, teach pickleball or something.
Right.
Something like that. I wasn't, I wasn't sure when I saw that outdoor ring, I thought maybe that money had already been allocated and I was wondering how.
No, council hasn't made the decision on that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Walsh. One short, certified question, Candace. Um, I, I'm glad we're recurring this rule because. A little damp, but I've also noticed even a couple of them said that on the ice surface. So, is it in this position that we feel we're okay to get through another little bit of time before we?
We're gonna have to, yeah. But, um, fortunately, we're able to do it in phases. You know, I'm not saying, now, that said, we will be including in the tender for them to do some repair work on that other side. Um, but it'll only be as good as a repair is. But you and I both know that that roof is, 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 is coming. But we need to get the ice plant, the chiller and the condenser, like, last thing we need is for the ice to have an issue. So, you know, we can deal with a few leaks, we'll do some repairs. But we need to get this roof done and get the chiller and the condenser taken care of. That gives, gives us another twenty years there. And then shift to start to, to deal with the, the roof, yeah. Just can't do it all at once.
All in favor of the motion, counsel? Motion is carried. Moving along to our sixth, employee benefit renewal.
Hmm, thank you. So annual report that council sees on an annual basis is the twenty twenty-four employee benefit renewal. Um, it covers the period of November one, twenty twenty-three to November one, twenty twenty-four. Um, and it includes the basic life insurance, um, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, long-term disability, uh, weekly indemnity insurance, which is, which is also short-term, uh, disability, um, extended healthcare dental and the employee assistance program. Um, overall, it, we're looking at a five percent decrease, um, for the year. Um, I've laid out kind of where our claims are for the year, um, in regards to prescription drugs all the way down to, um, physiotherapy. The number of dental claims paid out for this year decreased by thirty-three percent. Um, you know, for the previous year had seen a huge spike, so everyone's teeth must be in fairly decent shape. Um, and, um, although we're seeing a, a decrease, um, last year. although we're seeing a, a decrease, um, last year we experienced an increase of ten percent. This year, we're experiencing a decrease of five percent and really this fund of, you know, went on council for a while or tracking it, you can kind of see it's kind of volatile as far as, you know, we'll see like it'll go up and then it'll go way back down and it all depends on the negotiation. So when it's up for full negotiation, they sometimes will enter into agreements, well, the life insurance premium is fixed for three years. Well, then come year four, it's wham, here's like a forty percent increase and then it comes back down and it really also depends, we're part of the, uh, Peterborough County Consortium, so we're part of the larger group. So it really all depends on the claim history and, and what is happening and how many claims. LTDs, the long-term disabilities, really are the biggest driver of, of, for the most part, um, of a lot of claim histories and what happens to the rates. Um, but all in all, I don't very often bring a story forward to council that proposed as a decrease of anything, so we'll we can, we can take it, but we're also proposing no changes, um, no changes to, to the benefit package and you can see that we have um, three classes of employees and, uh, a legal with counsel if you have any specific questions for me.
Uh, go ahead, Counsel Walsh, go with short-term disability. We have.
So, short-term disability is under the, uh, weekly indemnity insurance.
Okay.
That's what that means.
Okay.
Um, there is a, a maximum of five thousand dollars per month, um, that can be, um, received. And then obviously you can only stay in short term, so long before you have to flip to long term.
But it kicks immediately?
There's no waiting period. Well, you have to sick day first.
Okay, sick day.
Yeah, you have to utilize your sick days first. So if you have sick days sitting in a bank and you go off sick, then you need to utilize them, but you do not need to utilize vacation.
Yeah, that's you.
Council, do I have someone to make a motion to accept this report with approval for twenty twenty four employee, employee benefit renewal package as presented? From November first, twenty twenty three to November first, twenty twenty four. Counselor Walsh, Deputy Mayor Bird, any further discussion? A motion, everybody in favor? Motion's carried. For final staff report, the management action list, Candace?
Thank you, mayor. So as you can see, we are down to our final four meetings of the year. Um, which is hard to believe, to be honest with you, um. October twenty fourth, we only have the one meeting of council, um, as we know when we adopt our council meeting, but, uh, schedule, um, because of Thanksgiving and the Norbert Fair, council has waived that meeting traditionally, so um, we just have the one, which means that it tends to be a bit of a whopper. Um, you can see here that, um, the zoning bylaw amendments that are seen here, um, Edgerton is the only one that has been received back from the county at this point in time, that is one hundred percent a guarantee that's gonna move forward. Um, Burns and Pine are still sitting at the county level and we're waiting to receive them back. So, once they're received back, we have to have them in time to do, um, the twenty day notification circulation to the hundred, to the properties within a hundred and twenty meters. Um, so it really all depends on if we get it before October, you know, basically October third, um, as to whether we can get them out the door. All the envelopes have been prepared and labeled and are sitting there, um, ready to go. Um, so it really just all depends on the timing. Um, these are all follow-ups to the consents. Um, so they're all conditioned of the consent, so they've all, there's a condition on each one of these files that state that at, uh, the zoning has to be, uh, satisfaction of the municipality. So in order for them, for their consent to be finalized, the zoning has to be approved at the lower tier. So you've seen all of these files before. Um, the packages aren't gonna include any large studies. So your agenda package isn't gonna be huge, but those links, if you want to go back and review those studies, they're still on the township's website. They'll be there, but we're not gonna re-circle the environmental impact study and all them. Again, you've seen them during the consent process. If you want them specifically sent to you, let me know. Um, Kyle's gonna get a sand pipe replacement update. The sand pipe has landed in Great Terrio yard. So it is here, which are here, but in the province, which is great. Uh, we're having our, uh, accessibility, accessibility plan surveys out now. Our focus groups are gonna be held at the beginning of October. And, um, hopefully be able to see a draft for you there, um, CMO producer responsibility agreement. Um.
When is that supposed to be implemented?
January first, May fourth.
Yeah, cause I, I was thinking about that the other day.
Yeah. It's painful. So what they have done is they have basically tried to come up with a cookie cutter agreement for everyone. So they're not tailored or customized to each municipality. Which we're not used to seeing. Um, so uh, autonomy self-managen, just based with them having the land, the venture growth in their municipality, has an environmental, uh, lawyer. So the CIO group agreed and we are having their lawyer review the agreement and we're all collectively made about sharing the cost of the lawyers review. Um, so we, we're just waiting for the final round of comments and we have a CIO meeting on October fifth to go through, um, the agreement. Again, this is round three, maybe four, but we're still waiting for the financial incentive because they have to give us money, right? So we're waiting to see what that's gonna be. Um, there's been lots of back and forth on the ineligible properties because they wanted to just state that it was twenty-five percent of our land of our properties in the municipality that were ineligible, but when we actually go through the MPA codes, code by code, we're about five percent. Um, so five percent of our municipality is ineligible, not twenty-five, so it's well worth the exercise, we clawed back twenty percent there. Um. But all, it's gonna, uh, we should be advertising now. Like now is when we need to be educating our residents, because it's gonna take three months of consistent messaging to get the changes in effect and but unfortunately, we're, we're working away at it. Hopefully, uh, on October twenty fourth, we'll have an agreement, we'll enter into it, we'll know what costs we're gonna recruit and hopefully, um, we'll be able to get some education rolling. I can tell you that we're probably gonna have to do it on our own. If we want our residents to be educated, um, in a timely fashion, we're gonna have to take it on.
Go ahead.
So, I was actually, I actually made note of this one earlier today, because I was thinking about it, because so the, it's recycling, right? It's not waste.
That's right.
It's recycling.
Just recycling only, yeah.
And we are not technically responsible for it.
That's correct.
The producers, those conglomerations of the producers are.
Correct.
So then when people's recycling is not picked up, we don't actually have anything to do with it?
That's correct.
And this is the thing, okay, and it's going to be, but.
It used to be the, it's the county now.
It's county now.
Right, and so now we have to forward all the complaints, it's sort of a miss collection, say.
Yeah.
Then we have, we have a number that we have to give our residents to call, so they, um, call and try to work through that process with them. We don't know who the contractor's gonna be, so we don't know if it's gonna be Amtrera, which is the current contractor now, we don't know if they're gonna be the successful bidder on the contract. If they are, there will be less of people, but the hope is then those companies are aware of the roots and the little, the smaller little pockets of roads, you know, that aren't the traditional main arteries. Um, but all in all, it's what is being recycled and how it's being packaged and how it's being done is different.
Okay, so that will change as well.
That will change, so what is acceptable in the blue box is, is different. It's actually the better, my understanding is, there's a few other things that, there's a few other things that currently aren't acceptable in the blue box that now will be. Acceptable in the blue box, so that's great. My bigger concern is the ineligible properties.
Yeah.
The properties that currently get blue box pickup, but come January first, if they're not part of the transition period, no longer get blue recycling pickup. So there has to be a plan. So are we as a municipality going to provide that service? Come January one, but we don't know yet. Um, and how are we gonna do that? And how are we going to recoup the cost of it? So Peter and I are trying to get a handle on that for the environmental budget. And is it going to be like a levy that just gets built into the overall levy, or does it need to be, because it's only commercial properties, does it have to be a special levy on that base?
Right.
So, but it's almost October. There's just, we're slamming together, but we have, um, we're trying to reach out to some of the municipalities, transitions, transition July first of this year. Um, so we want a meeting, we've asked them, we want a meeting, um, get, get a list, and we're gonna reach out and try to talk to some of the municipalities that have now been dealing, um, with it for three months and how that transition, what did they learn? You know, what would you do different? Um, but it's a, it's, I'm really concerned about ineligible properties, but. Thank you. You're welcome.
Uh, yeah, just, just another question, um, for the ineligible, eligible properties, you're saying that's a five percent?
Of our overall total property cap, okay.
And just a, just another comment, um, we're, we're scrambling a little bit here, but I just think of the city of Peterborough, Clearbacks, Freemasons.
They're throwing it all out, all of one year.
All within, you know, weeks of one another, so, um, as bad as we are, I would want to be sitting around the table in the city.
Hopefully, they just have a hotline, yeah. Um, uh, draft parks budget, facilities, fire, um, Norwood Water compliance inspection, that should say, file by a hundred percent, so draft water sanitary connection fees, which he alluded to today, so we'll see that come forward. And, um, the financial statements. Baker Tilly, so, um, we have three delegations on this meeting, so we have Watson's for connection fees, we have Baker Tilly for financials, and then we have a resident. So. Sorry, not sorry. Um, but, uh, and as, as I say, some of those ones have to jump, may have to jump forward to the fourteenth of November, depending, so shuffle things around a little bit if we need to, but that's it for me.
Do I have somebody to make a motion to accept this report? Council, Counselor Ward, uh, Counselor Hodge agrees, and I think we've discussed this now, all in favor? Carry. Uh, we have no correspondence for action today. Council ladies on reports, does anybody have anything they'd like to bring forward? Counselor Ward.
Uh, thank you, three mayor, just a very brief one. Uh, we have just, uh, decided to have a cultural heritage meeting for Monday, October second, it will be at the Heritage Center in Westwood at six P M. And, um, we are having it to discuss, um, our next events, which is the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of November, which will be a Victorian Christmas, and details to follow. That would be in Westwood Heritage.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Walsh.
Uh, again, just totally, just a reminder from the special events committee, uh, remember the pumpkin, pumpkin parade will be on November the first from five till eight o'clock. Um, over beside the splash pad on the trail.
There should be drop-off locations, right?
Yes, there are drop-off locations. Yeah, they'll be on social media, Westwood. Like the township office in here.
Good.
Okay. Uh. You have your treasure list.
Okay, uh, the walkways in front of the town hall have been, you know, placed and for that warranty work, but that's the last time. The sidewalk on County Road Forty-five, I call it the Baker Street Extension, um, is completely placed up so it's safe. The County Road Forty-five pedestrian crossing that was approved by council is, is on order. We're expecting to receive it any day. Now the legwork is done, we'll pay to receive, um, county permits received. Um, basically, as soon as it's received, we've gotta get it up and then, um, we'll have the line painting will have to be done once it's there. Um, when he's in town doing the line painting for that crossing on County Road Forty-five, we will be doing the parking lot here. The community center parking lot lines are getting done as well.
That was my question.
Um, the murder mystery night, uh, for October twenty seventh, um, the tickets are available for sale right now, there are twenty tables, um, in total, uh, three tables are, are spoken for since, um, they went up for sale. Um, so there's fifteen tables that can be purchased as a whole and there's five tables that can be purchased as single ticket. So, um, just putting it out there that it's gonna go quickly. Um, sponsorship, uh, for, uh, the medical center opened yesterday. Uh, the reception area has been some sponsored, the waiting room area has been sponsored. Um, so things are moving forward, uh, there as well, considering only twenty-four hours in. Um, scarecrow road shows October seventh to ninth. Um, and council got an email from Mike Garci, that is our I T guy, so please accept that. Mike Garci, um, so he sent an email out in regards to, um, your, um, spamware, um, to ensure that we're protect cybersecurity, um, so that is a legit email, so he'll be reaching out and work with you on that. And that's it for me, thank you.
Okay, general business, does anybody have anything they would like to discuss, counselor or deputy member?
Uh, just a one question, three mayor. Um, I'm sure everyone saw the impact notice that, uh, there won't be any of the reassessments done for another twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four now. Do you anticipate that affecting our yeah, our taxes? Do you anticipate?
Well, it affects every year because we have face in assessment. So essentially, a municipality that has no growth to offset, so, right, so you have your face assessment, you have your phase in assessment, and then you have your growth assessment. So those are the, the three pockets. Traditionally, the base assessment and the base investment have always been guaranteed and you really just, your growth assessment, um, whether that's through the suck, suck and emit process, um, which is someone built a garage or addition to their house, and all of that assessment comes online, then, you know, that's kind of the extra to the tax base. Now, phase in, we haven't seen
For eight years.
At all.
Yeah, for eighty years.
Yeah, well, the phase in stopped in twenty twenty, so twenty sixteen phase in, it started in twenty sixteen. So they're saying it's the phased in value that was determined in twenty sixteen. But it's, the full phase in was in effect in twenty twenty. Um, so they just didn't re-kickstart another process because of the pandemic. And now it's because of inflation and whatever other reasons they're utilizing. So, yeah, it has impact. So we are not able to use the phased in and growth assessment to offset inflation. So essentially, there, my concern is the reckoning day. Or is, though, there'll never be a reckoning day and we'll just kind of, we'll, we'll just have to eat the loss and they'll come back in. Um, provincial policy, MPA doesn't have any say or control with the provincial government is doing. Um, any sort of, you know, time we can lobby, just getting a good explanation as to the why would be helpful, it's just kind of like MPA delivers the message, but you hear very little about it from the provincial table.
You're a master.
You know, maybe, maybe clan, Minister Landrell, um, address it, but I think they're just trying to put a hold on, you know, increase in assessment, because the market was so high. So it was, in certain circumstances, the assessment growth was like, the market was so high, it wasn't gonna sustain, right? So then they're going to be putting at assessments, you know, based on this market value and then the market, because it, in, interest rates are so high and it's impacting the market. I don't know, but it's definitely impacting the municipal process across the province, that's for sure.
Anybody else? I have one for these counselors and it's to do with the stop sign that I think needs positioned, and that's on the county road. And it's up in front of the Senate half, as you're coming from County Road Forty down. Then you hang a left and you're down to the stoplights. There should be a stop sign on the county road as you come right at the Senate half. You have it on the opposite side of the road. You should have one on this side of the road because cars going through to turn into food land is chaos. Uh, that might help somewhat, but I think it'll also help with cars that come up and go to turn right. Because the ones coming from the left just keep coming down and there's going to be an. because the ones coming from the left just keep coming down and there's going to be an accident there.
Had there ever been a stop sign there, ever?
On that side, I, I don't remember myself.
Used to be, but it used to be more obviously, it was always right of way going north of the ninth, but it used to be much more of a sharper corner, like they
Yeah, the corner is wider now.
Corner coming from Ridge Street down, they did something there to make it more of a gentle sweep the other way. Like, I think it used to be, there wasn't a stop sign, she had to go more sharply, I remember. But the problem with putting a stop sign there is are you going to have one coming up out of like, uh, are you gonna make it up?
You wouldn't be able to for the amount of
No, not for the amount of traffic going up, you can't stop the traffic going up, coming down, you could stop it. I've just had some residents say to me like, it has to have, I'm bringing it forward to you people, I, I honestly think it does need it. But if so, we have to
County, so do we have to do a staff report to go to county cuz we can't just put one up or come with?
No.
Well, cuz I, I just don't know if in, you know, the M tat, whatever the book is that Peter talks about, if that's the right way that you can do an intersection, having the traffic stopping there, but not there, and I just
I think you would have to pass a motion asking for um county staff to do an assessment of that intersection, maybe not tell them what needs to get done cuz we may not know all the rules in the rulebook as as Council Hodge is stating, but just maybe asking them to do an assessment of the intersection based on concerns that have been brought forward and to let us know the outcome of the assessment. And then once we get the assessment, it maybe will say recommend a few options and council can support one or the other. Because I, I doubt county council determines wherever stops sign go, I'm assuming it's probably a probably a delegation of authority to the roads department and they determine it. Um, so council passed a motion to ask county staff to do an assessment, I mean, we can't drag that, we just have to ask.
Is there, is that, that was definitely redesigned, I mean, it was like thirty years ago, but it was definitely designed to be what it is now.
Right.
So there, there was obviously rationale at that point. But yes, I think we should do.
Now have a motion of that then?
I will put that forward, it's a recommendation that we sent our uh request to Peterborough County to assess that, that corner.
And second by Hodge Greaves. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried. And I have one other thing that I have to bring forward in general business, but it's to do with the previous council and I've had a letter sent to me from Mayor Leo. Is the previous council in this council still interested in a transportation? Talking about transportation from the city of Peterborough.
Oh, like, what, the partnership that they have with Lakefield? Right, very great.
Like I have to move it forward, I'm not just gonna do it on my own.
Um, has that request also gonna have luck?
I think Havelock's the one that brought it up.
Oh, okay.
And then the letter come from Mayor Leo.
Right. Durodummer is also involved, I got an email yesterday from Durodummer. Um, in regards to, to see if we have any appetite in anticipating. And she sent it out to Havelock and us. Um, Bonnashir Valley partnered with two neighboring municipalities to provide a car sharing type service with electric vehicles. Um, it's a model that they use for another rural municipality, um, anyway, she's just looking for a discussion. I know that, you know, providing a car sharing type service with electric vehicles, it's just a different approach versus like a bus.
I like that idea better than the bus, but that's my own.
But then, but if you look at it from people who don't have access to a car, who are you trying to service, people who ride sharing have to at least have a driver's license, whereas if you had a bus service, then people who don't have can't drive a vehicle.
But they're driving electric cars, they're most likely talking, somebody driving that around with the street municipalities, are they? Did they say a lot on?
I was thinking it would be like a Zipcar thing where you remotely, you just time share a car. In urban centers, they have time shared vehicles, they're usually private companies, one brand is Zipcar and you uh, and nowadays it would be on your phone, you would program when you have the car and you beep into the car and you use the car and then you come back. But that is again, someone who has a driver's license.
And they collected the revenue from the electric vehicle charging stations too, the municipality did.
Council Ward.
Um, thank you, I actually think that having a smaller mode of, of vehicle to transport makes sense because of, a lot of times if you look at even city buses, for example, uh, many times they're not utilized to capacity and, and so having more frequent, smaller sized vehicles, you know, does make sense, I just would like to see what kind of thing that proposal.
Uh, Deputy Member?
Uh, yeah, just, just a comment, um, I think of that proposal that the campus received about the car sharing, I'd like to learn more about that. And I, I don't wanna shut the door on the other one either and like, it certainly wouldn't be a full size bus. I'm sure it's a, you know, a, a small bus that would compare, but I, I think, I think we need to look at, at all our options. Um, I, I think, not saying we're going to do it, but I think we're looking at.
Okay, I, I wanted to go ahead forward to council because it was sent to me.
And just a comment on buses. Buses take up the space of two vehicles, so if you have two people on a bus, you're actually saving, if you have three people on a bus, it looks empty, the bus looks empty, that actually occupies less space than three cars that have one person in each car. So people think that buses that are empty are taking up space, but they're not, they're actually taking up significantly less space than the same number of vehicles that do have vehicles.
Yeah, no, it wasn't about the space, so for me it was that if they're not full, I mean, you use a smaller capacity vehicle. It wasn't about the space of taking up on the road, but it was more of the capacity of, uh, if there's only three people utilizing it and yeah, I understand the, uh, you know, two people or two cars are the equivalent of one bus, but if there, you only need the space for three, why would you have a bus? I think so, just
Yeah, I think it needs to be explored in greater depth.
Okay.
Most definitely, most definitely, there is some other concerns in regards to um, transportation um, coming out of the city to and from, that would have to be
You know, we need that list frozen on and what would work, would work in this one.
Five minutes.
Everybody else have anything to bring up? Do you have a direction on that? So I'll just go ahead and carry on with it, I don't think I need direction, I can find out as much information as we can from uh Mayor Leo and we'll uh report back to this other one, if they're gonna have meetings, we'll go.
Yeah. This isn't it, isn't there a thing on the management action list or wasn't there a connectivity one or, I feel like it's somewhere, I don't have that one open right now. Something around the bus lane.
There was something on there.
But I can't. That's pedestrian, but I thought there was
Additional electric vehicle charging station.
Transit route to and from Peterborough ongoing, so a part of, it's been on the man, the action list, it's
That's been on there since
So, but we haven't removed it, so then I would say either action it or remove it, right?
Right.
So you're going to
It wasn't include, what happened was that conversation got tabled cuz it wasn't identified in the strategic plan. So that's why, and it, it wasn't identified as the main priority of council at the time, so our, our, our focus has been, some, no, nothing, it can't be, but that's just why it hasn't been action, was it wasn't identified, um, as a strategic priority in strategic plan, it's gonna, it'll be a huge undertaking with a huge financial dollar. But that said, I'm not saying that as we're growing, it may not happen now, maybe we need a bigger base in those, but as we're growing, I think there's definitely a need, um. The question I always come back to is, whenever you ask the question of you, if there was transportation to Peterborough, would you use everyone immediately? Oh, like, a lot of people say yes. But it's when you're like, okay, tell me how you're gonna incorporate that into your life. Uh, like, how, is that gonna translate into, yes, every Thursday, I'm gonna go into, I'm gonna physically go and get on that bus. Conceptually, I think everybody agrees, but how many are actually incorporated into their, they, they like physically get in the car or get on the bus, whatever it may be, and utilize that mode of transportation and incorporate it into their schedules. And that's their two different conversations and I mean, I've, I've learned that over the years, it's conceptually, I think everybody agrees to something, it's just how, sounds great. How does it actually gonna work? And is a stop in, in Oregon gonna be fine, are we gonna have to have a stop in Westwood, how does that correlate to Durodummer and Havelock, that not with Boone, and it's gonna have to be phased.
Deputy Member?
Uh, yeah, I guess um, part of the report back or the information we need is also how is it working or being selling?
Right.
That's important to
Yeah.
And learn from their mistakes and what works, what doesn't, and also I think maybe we um, we're talking about transportation, the community care has the best which you pass it over, utilizes and maybe we need to um, get some more information out to residents if they choose to use
Northumberland County as well, because they have, Northumberland County has a transportation program and all their local tiers.
So I'm just thinking that uh maybe we need some more information and, and perhaps that can be, if it's there already, perhaps we could utilize that a little bit more, so I think we have a lot of options.
Maybe it's a common concern.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I had to bring up, um, we'll move on to uh, head into a closed session and I'm looking for a motion to move and pause the recording at three twenty-five P M. to discuss one item regarding personal matters of other than the and that indefensible in Yeah, that's the word, individual concluding municipal or local board employees in accordance with section two thirty-nine dash two section B of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, and one item regarding litigation or potential litigation including matters before administration tribunals affecting the municipality or local board in accordance with section two thirty-nine. Test two, or section two, section E of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, can I? Please, we have a closed session, the board, certain Hodge Greaves. All in favor? Harry, thank you. Uh, we're now back in open session, uh, four twenty-four. Notice a motion, we have no notice of motion, uh, moving on to the confirming bylaw.
Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of the council, the township of Ashford, Northwood, till September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, the record second and third time and numbered by law twenty twenty-three forty-six.
And motion by Deputy Mayor Bird and Council Walsh, all in favor, motions carried. Your meeting schedules are on there. Move on for motion to adjourn, please. Council Ward, Council Hodge Greaves, all in favor, motions carried.